Missing two bodies. That's at the hand. Hey. Just reading that, is that what I'm doing?
What was that?
So I'm just reading that. Go for it.
No reportable action taken.
Councilmember Hewer?
Here.
Councilmember Campion?
Here.
Councilmember Powers?
Here. Could you all rise please for a sound present? Handled by Scout Troops 498 and 598.
Will the audience please rise for the presentation of the colors? Salute. Color guard advance. Color guard prepared to post the colors? Post the colors. Will the audience please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all.
Two. Audience may be seated. Color guard dismissed.
Can we get the video statement, please?
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel on Comcast, Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse. The meeting is also webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Tonight's meeting will air this Friday and Saturday at 9:00 a.m. This meeting is also closed captioned. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Thank you. And tonight, under Presentations, we have only one, and it's a fairly important one to us. It's an Outstanding Service Award to the Real Life Church of the Galt Volunteers, and it's in sincere appreciation of time dedicated to the installation of the Harvey Park Playground. Is Jeff McCreech in? The audience, there he is.
Pastor Jeff McCreech, thank you very much.
Thank you, Pastor Jeff.
Appreciate it. We volunteered to, oh, excuse me. We volunteered to put up the slide and quite an elaborate deal at Harvey Park. There was about eighteen of us. We thought it was going to be maybe a two-day project. It lasted a week. And the main thing was following the directions, putting it together, and there was at least seven to eight thousand nuts and bolts. And so it was finished. We had neighbors that came and volunteered to help when we were putting it together. It was a real joy and lots of laughter. But the only problem we had at the end of putting this all together, we had a few nuts and bolts left. And so use it at your own risk. Thank you very much.
While they're taking a picture, if I may add, they worked tirelessly, long days, in triple-digit weather to get that put together for the last weekend in August for the Heritage Day Festival. Our staff could not have done it without all the volunteers that helped.
And I'd like to add on to that. And I know that you've been back there because I got a report from Pastor James saying he saw at one time thirty-two children climbing all over that. So even without those bolts, I think it's pretty sturdy. And thank you so much.
Can we have public comment, please?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address council on any agenda item during consideration of the item. Speakers shall restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council and limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Please pull out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances of the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the clerk.
Okay, and I see we have speaker sheets. Are these all related to existing? Okay, the bill goes up then. Moving on to the information consent calendar. Do I have a motion to approve?
Summoned.
A motion by Vice Mayor Payne. Second by Councilmember Campion. Call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Motion passes four oh. Moving on to item number three. Is that correct? No, that isn't correct. Culture and Recreation. Skatepark Inspection Improvements and Expansion. You don't look like Mr. Solis.
And council members, we are here to talk about the skatepark inspection improvements and expansion. The recommendation was to defer the skatepark improvements and expansion until Walker Park's Phase One is completed and funds are available. At the January 7, 2015 Strategic Planning Session, the Parks and Recreation Department was instructed to present to city council options for the skatepark improvements, including funding and cost estimates. Staff presented a report to city council on August 18, 2015, recommending that city council defer decision on the skatepark improvements and expansion until Walker Park's Phase One B is complete and funds are available. At that August 18 meeting, council voted to continue the item and have staff contact the city's insurance pool to have an independent safety inspection completed and provide a written report at a future meeting. On August 31, 2015, staff met with Bitmore Risk Control Consultant Bill Vanet. Mr. Vanet's report, which included, which is attached, indicated that the skatepark is in average condition for a twelve-year-old skatepark. The issues found were minor in nature, and staff is in the process of repairing them. Staff contacted American Ramp Company, A R C, and had them provide less costly options to upgrade the skatepark without expanding the concrete area in order to help keep the costs down. We were provided with three options ranging from ninety-eight thousand five hundred to one hundred and eleven thousand, and those are attached as well. The fiscal impact, park development impact fees could be used to fund a portion of the improvements and expansion of the skatepark from the original design. The general fund would need to fund those components of the project that would be considered general maintenance or replacement of the existing equipment. Of the total estimate of three hundred and twenty-three thousand two hundred dollars, one hundred and one thousand five hundred and seventy-seven dollars would need to be funded from the general fund. The remaining balance of two hundred and twenty-one thousand six hundred and twenty-three dollars could be funded by using park development impact fees. The fund balance estimate for Fund 11, Park Capital, as of June 30, 2015, is six hundred and sixty-one thousand three hundred and thirty, and Fund 12, Quimby Parkland, is five hundred and twenty-two thousand six hundred and eighty, for a total of one million one hundred and eighty-four thousand and ten dollars in park-related development impact fees. Revenue estimates for the fiscal year 2015-16 for both Fund 11 and 12 total two million seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand five hundred and eighty, but this is only an estimate and dependent on future residential development. Majority of these funds are currently budgeted for Walker Park Phase One B, scheduled for construction in 2016. This project is estimated in the C I P at three million six hundred and thirty-five thousand five hundred dollars. However, the actual cost of the project will not be known until the project is sent out to bid. Based on the current revenue and Walker Park Phase One B estimates, there could potentially be funding available by the end of the current fiscal year to fund the skatepark improvements, but this is very uncertain. There is also a need to use park impact fees to construct open space improvements along Forest Street on the railroad property. The amount needed will not be known until the design for the open space improvements is complete and the CDBG allocation from Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency is finalized. Our alternatives are council could appropriate the funds necessary to expand and improve the skatepark from the original design from Fund 11, Park Capital, and the general fund and proceed with constructing the skatepark improvements immediately. This is not recommended as Walker Park Phase One B remains a higher priority, and funding the skatepark could now potentially delay the project. Alternative two is council could forego the expansion and just replace the aging equipment with similar new equipment at the skatepark by choosing one of the three options listed ranging from the ninety-eight thousand five hundred to one hundred and eleven thousand from the general fund. This would require an appropriation from general fund reserves, and this is not recommended as the skatepark is still usable and does not present any immediate safety concerns for users. It is estimated that there may be funding available to complete the skatepark improvement as early as 2016-17, and staff believes it would be the best to proceed with all of the improvements at the same time.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just add a few summary comments. So I, you know, I think just to summarize what staff is presenting and recommending tonight is that we would ultimately like to move ahead with a skatepark expansion, which would replace the existing equipment, expand the footprint of the skatepark, and put an expanded use area in. The cost is over three hundred thousand dollars to do that. We'd like to defer making those improvements until we have completed the Walker Park Phase One B, which has been in our capital improvement plan for quite some time. It's estimated to cost in excess of three point six million dollars. We think we're going to have excess funds at the end of that project, which is about a year to eighteen months out. And hopefully, if we have eighteen, have additional funds at that point, we would move forward or recommend to the council we move forward with the expanded skatepark design. We have prepared options for you as it relates to replacing the existing equipment that is there right now without doing an expansion. That's not our recommendation. It would cost about a hundred thousand dollars roughly out of the general fund right now. It would probably make the expansion of that park in a year to a year and a half from now more expensive to do because we would have already replaced a portion of the equipment. So in summary, what the recommendation is to the council tonight is to defer any additional improvement or expansion of the skatepark until we complete Walker Park One B. As Monica indicated, we have had the park inspected by an independent inspector through our insurance pool. They have found that it is a safe structure. It is being maintained in a good manner, and the lifespan on that equipment is certainly another one to two years out. So that is the recommendation from staff this evening.
With council's indulgence, I've got quite a few speaker sheets here from the public. I want to go ahead and do those if we could. Starting off with Al Baldwin.
Well, good evening. Al Baldwin, a concerned citizen of Galt, city of character, looking after people and citizens, their youngsters, their middle youngsters, their young adults. We've always done that. Twelve years ago, you decided to do something then, and it played out pretty good. You've got twelve years of service without any major upgrades. And it's pretty unusual because usually you want an upgrade here and there. You want some cement in there. You need some pipes redone. You want to look at it. It's amazing that nothing was really suggested over that period of time. It's just simply amazing. But what are you going to do now? If you just shut down that skatepark and you can't even make these, and let's say, average repairs? You've had a professional check it out. You've had this, there's a few things here, a few things there, a little powder on one of the pipes, maybe. It's something that would show that you're still caring about Galt and not just letting it go. You need to have something for these skateboarders, and I don't mean the older ones, the younger ones too. They learn from the older ones. And it's a matter of character to go in there and watch how the older ones do it and the younger ones come by, and the older ones help the younger ones, which is a great showing of character. It's called respect, responsibility. And I just can't see, just put this thing on hold for another year, you don't even know what Walker Park's going to cost. It may be extremely low, it may be very high. But to wait that long for the skatepark to be down is not very good. The public needs to have a place, at least for some of the kids, young adults, children, and parents, and to do promotions over there for fundraisers, to try and buy other things. It's just a shame that you just put it down. It's like a horse that broke its leg, just shoot it. And sometimes those legs can be at least put together so it can still be used in other ways. Well, this particular skatepark can be used in many different ways, and I think it will be if you can just arrange to do some of the repair work that needs to be on this thing here. It's not major, according to the report. It's just something that needs to be done. And if you don't do it, it's like, well, hate to say it, but shooting a horse and killing it just because of a minor leg breaking, and that horse could still be doing things to help it, help it go. And it's not in pain. The skatepark is really ready to rock and roll, and the people out there have been taking care of it. You know, you still have security cameras out there that can be monitored from the Parks and Rec office. That was put in a few years ago, which makes it even better to watch what's going on over there. The school in the back of it, Fairsite, hasn't really complained that much about it. It's just something that Galt had for twelve years. And it's helped the young adults, it's helped the children, it's helped the parents. And it's a nice, fun place to go to. I just can't see you just erasing that thing out there. It's just...
Al, that's not what's proposed. They're proposed to do the repairs.
Well, I just, I know, but this is just the beginning, and I want to throw everything at you I can. Because I want you to do it, and I want it done at a certain date, by a certain date. I'd like to have the date tonight when it would be done because so many things were put off for so long that all of a sudden, you know, it's not done. So winter's coming on. You can do it before winter. You can still get it done. And show your pride in the community by at least doing that, and I'm thinking you will, but go for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Al. Thanks, Al.
Andrew Klotz.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Klotz, and thank you for letting me be today. I'm speaking on behalf of the Wiggy Skate Aiding Club at Liberty Ranch High School. Our club is fairly new, but we're relatively large in size. We have some members in the audience here. Wiggy Club is devoted to literature, the fine arts, music, and skateboarding. And we believe that the repairs of skatepark are necessary to ensure that the park's environment is safe, fun, and accepting. Currently, the skatepark sits adjacent to the pool and the Chabola Center, both of which are family centers. However, it does have some problems with safety. I mean, I know when I was a child, my mom would let me go there because it was kind of risky. However, bottom line, this isn't working. Bottom line is, the skatepark, I love skating. I love the skatepark. It's an amazing thing to do. It teaches you so much. I know there's a preconceived notion that the skaters are bad people. They do drugs, they do all these things. But I see these guys out in the audience right now, and they look like respectable young adults. And I was one of them. I'm a respectable young adult right now. I'm on the Galt Youth City Council. I'm an honor student. I've, I'm an AP scholar with honor. I mean, I think doing something for another extracurricular activity besides Walker Park is perfectly reasonable ask of the city council. And that's what I would like you to, that's what I would like you to think about. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Colton Paletti, is that correct?
Hello, my name is Colton Paletti. I would like to thank the city council for allowing me to speak this evening. And following parliamentary procedure, I'd like to ask the chairman's permission to read from a pre-written statement.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir. I'm here tonight as a representative of the Wiggy Club. This multicultural club at Liberty Ranch was created for individuals with a passion for literature, the fine arts, music, and skateboards. I and my fellow officers and members have come here tonight in regards to the Department of Park and Rec's recommendation to construct a baseball field instead of renovating and expanding the facilities at Chabola Skate Park. On behalf of our club and the youth of our community, we ask that the actions be made to renovate the skatepark. Neglecting the park would be an unwise choice for the city as it would be neglecting the city's youth that relies on the park for a safe environment to practice their individual hobby, be it skateboard, bikes, or scooters. What the council needs to keep in mind is that the, is the safety of the city's youth. If these facilities are not in a condition where they can be used, many will be driven to skate in the streets and neighborhoods. This is dangerous for our youth, not only in regards to the traffic in neighborhoods, but a lack of oversight. This council has a chance to do a good thing for the community as a whole. Please realize that the skatepark can be more than a hangout for deviants of our community, but a safe environment. Take into account that for many of us, skating or BMX is just as important as an extracurricular as any of the other activities, including the baseball field that is proposed to be built. Thank you.
Thank you, Colton.
Adrian DeVogue.
I am here speaking on behalf of the Wiggy Club, which I am a member of. I would like to speak in favor of the renovations that want to be made on the skatepark. I feel that it's important to keep the skatepark, excuse me, the skatepark open because Walker Park is in a good condition as it is, and the skatepark tends to be falling into disrepair. And I feel that it's important for us to encompass a wide variety of the youth in our community. It's important to keep a park open for the younger children, even people who like to go there to hang out. But the skatepark is also a good place for those of the older age to go and spend time and make sure that they're out in their community as opposed to staying in their homes isolated. I personally have a little brother too, who really loves to go skateboarding. And it's not just appealing to people of a higher age or people who are just seeking to get out of the house or rebel against their parents. It's a good chance for them to maybe release some of their pent-up feelings by skating, by finding something they like to do. And what's more is, though we do want these renovations to be made, we do want these repairs to be made, we don't want it to be a permanent solution. We feel it's important to keep the skatepark open, but we also feel that it's important for it to stay well, for it to be, excuse me, for it to be desirable. And please, with this in your heart, think about voting for this on the skatepark. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Adrian. Thank you. Xavier Gonzalez.
Hello. I came up here to talk about the safety about the skatepark. And I see the expansions you did about the screwdrivers and the bottom of the ramps. Yes, that lasted a couple of weeks, but like, it would just bend back in. And there's like inch-wide cracks in the cement, and the half-pipe bends in, and the half-pipe's all like cracked up, and it was like, it's just not safe. I mean, yeah, like, there's been a lot more little things coming around. I just don't feel like it's safe enough for like little kids and how the little people that came up here saying that they're follow the older people. Yes, they do. And they'd be asked for like to help them and understand us. But we take skating, BMX, and screwing as a sport. Other people take football and soccer and baseball. Like, hey, guys, want more baseball diamonds? There's plenty around. I just, I see the point in helping the skatepark.
Thank you, sir. J T Bambi.
Well, I'm here to talk about the skatepark and how it's safe and not safe. I mean, yeah, the guy had the report, and I've seen the whole report because my sister's part of the city council. I don't know if you've read it, but they did not read the whole thing. And there's like, you guys, the city Parks and Rec guys are like telling us if we don't like the skatepark, we can go somewhere else. And like, hot metal burns us not to fall. And like, I read the report and said like, some of the parts that are there, that are still there, like tripping and flipping hazards. And like, the whole week before the inspector came, the skatepark was closed because they were fixing it right before he came. If they would have left it how it was, there probably would have been a lot more like hazards and stuff like that. And he came on like a colder day because like it said, they came on August 31, sorry. And that, that was a colder day, so you couldn't like touch the ramp and feel how hot it was. And I remember from the last one, Ms. Barbara said that it was very hot when she went out there and still concerned because the ramps still bend in. There's rust whenever it rains. And honestly, we all have, there's baseball diamonds all over. Any kid can get like scouted there to go pro. And in the major, only one skatepark we can go pro and get up there and like, all the other pros. And if it's not up to speed and like reality, like, you have, you have like a twelve-year-old car, you're going to want to get it upgraded eventually. And a twelve-year-old skatepark, still sitting twelve years old. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Micah Stevenson.
Members of the council, thank you for your time. I'm here obviously to talk about the skatepark. Growing up, my dad always taught me the importance of investing in and finishing through with a project, whether that was growing up in the shop in our garage. We have hundreds of tools, most of which I don't even know what they do. My dad could tell you what they are. They're, most of them are woodworking, a lot of metalwork. But my dad always, at the end of a project that we'd work on, whether it was renovating our kitchen cabinets or working on the table or working on the chair, there was always a moment where we could sit back when the project was completely finished. And we just took a deep breath. We looked at that project, and there's a sense of pride, healthy pride, in that project. I think we have a great opportunity as a city, as a council, as as citizens to invest in our youth, in their future, in their dedication, to teach them the power of perseverance, whether that be through a single... that be through a single trick, whether that be a feeble, the finger whip out on a box that we saw last night from Anthony, right as Parks and Rec guy was coming to close the park last night, we were there till, till they came and closed the gate, and he, I forget who it was, that he sat at the gate, and he said, he's just going to get this one trick, and he fell probably two more times, but then he nailed it, and that Parks and Rec worker was just, oh my gosh, he was absolutely freaking out. That's all he was talking about for the next two minutes as he closed the gate. But as I mentioned before, we have a great opportunity to take an amazing amount of pride in our city, and have something that we look at and be proud about, proud about the activities that are going on there, proud about our youth that are there dedicating to, whether it be one trick, or whether it be every single day that they are there after school dedicating their blood, sweat and tears to what could ultimately be a career in what they do. If you look at action sports, you go on YouTube, you type in Red Bull, you will see an amazing amount of action sports that will absolutely blow your mind, most of which are done on scooters and on bikes and on skateboards. And they all got their start somewhere. They all got their start, whether it be flat ground, and then they traversed onto the driveway, and going down the driveway, and that was a shaky knee moment that they had, and then they started on the ramps at a skate park, and then, then what? Once that gets to a point where you outgrow it, and a 10-year-old isn't going to ride a toddler's bike with training wheels, because it's not going to allow them to expand into their future, it's not going to let them grow into what they potentially could do on a bicycle unless you give them the opportunity to do so. As I mentioned last, last month, we take what we call tours, and we'll load up and we have a 13-passenger van, and I have my Class B license, and we load up and we go to other cities. That's what we do, we go to Sacramento Power and 20B, and ultimately, while we're there, we don't always necessarily pay to get into those skate parks, because a lot of them are free, but when we're there, we go to get something to eat, we go to get something to drink at the stores and the shops that are nearby. I do understand that the skate park wouldn't be a big revenue, whatever the word is, sorry.
Revenue.
Revenue. Revenue, well, bring in a lot of revenue compared to a new baseball complex or a baseball field, because renting out to teens, renting out to the leagues, everything like that. But I don't think you can put a price on the amount of pride that you can take in your city and in your youth when you see where they are and the steps that they've taken to become the young men and women that they are, with the amount of determination that they put into their scootering, their skateboarding, their BMX, whatever it may be. So, thank you again for your time, and thank you for those improvements to the park. They did, they did make it somewhat safer, but I believe there is that underlying issue of investing into our youth and giving them something to be proud of, giving ourselves something to be proud of where we look at it and we say, rather than, oh, there's that skate park again, just kind of close your eyes as you move by. Thank you again.
Thank you, Micah.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilman, my name is Mike Singleton, the president and current CEO of Galt Police Activities League. When I started this program a little over two and a half years ago, it was because we were in desperate need, somebody to reach out to our youth, whether at risk or not. And I've done that, and yes, the skate park had, I say had, a bad reputation for the not-so-good folks being over there. That's because nobody took the time, made the effort, contacted these kids and youth of, and Galt Pal opened up, I made that contact. What you see or you hear, respectful, and wanting something that they have practiced on for a couple of years, are 12-years-old. These are good kids, responsible kids, they don't tear things up, but they are, in fact, I showed them schematics of their proposed park, they were just exuberant, as I was. So we teach these kids to be respectful, teach them to call you Mr. or Mrs. until they're told otherwise. They go to this park and they police their own park now, so that they can lose that reputation of, oh, you don't want to go over to the park because there's bad kids over there. Just like Micah was saying, you know, for so many years, we've gone like this, I can't see my kids over there. Not true nowadays. These kids deserve a little respect back. I teach them that you get what you give, and that's respect. I understand, as Micah had said, the skate park is not a revenue maker, but we do have to invest in our youth. Understand that we can rent out this park, like we do with Walker Field over there, Sacramento football teams and all that, and we can make some good revenue over there. But when we start turning our backs on the youth that are asking for a little bit to fix stuff up that is worn out, is 12-years-old, even with the Police Activities League, we could start losing those kids. I don't want to lose these kids, want to continue to teach them, mentor them, teach them life skills. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
I'm afraid you don't have any more speakers, I just wanted to make a few comments. First, we really like our skateboarders, and we really like our skate park, and it's not about which kids are more important to the community, because they're all important to the community. Walker Park is a very heavily-used facility, and a lot of the kids that use that facility are not here tonight. And the type of improvements that we're proposing and are in the capital improvement plan for Walker Park include additional youth basketball, softball fields, parking lot, a restroom. I understand that it's a dangerous proposition on the weekend when all the kids are out there to even get in line for the restroom, it's a real big issue. So, these improvements are to help the kids that are using the Walker Park facility. And unfortunately, we have a limited pot of money, and it's a timing issue that, a timing decision that we need to make. This is a project that's been on our books since 2013, 14, when it was put in the capital improvement plan, and we're just recommending that we defer the skate park improvements so that we know we have enough funds to complete these improvements at Walker Park, and then we move to the skate park. So, it's not a matter of choosing one group over another, it's a matter of just trying to, to use our, use our resources in a manner so that we know that once we start a project, we can complete it, and then once that project is completed, to move on to the next project. We really look forward to the day when we can improve the skate park, when we can expand it, and when we can have the ribbon cutting at the new improved skate park. It's just a matter of timing, but it's, you know, certainly open for council discussion and direction this evening.
Counsel.
I have some things to say.
Vice Mayor Ping.
Some time ago, we, the city decided that we needed to have a skate park for our youth to get them off the streets from going down Old Town Galt and riding the rails and jumping the stairs into the street. So, we built a skate park. Unfortunately, there is not, as far as I know, any supervision, so we did get a bad element that came in there. But my belief is that you don't close something down because you have some kids that, you know, they just weren't brought up right. But as far as a skate park, it should be something that we're proud of. And I know some time ago, it came up that you couldn't even get a drink of water there. So I went out and looked, and yeah, there's a water fountain there, but I think at that time, it was hooked up to the irrigation system. So supposedly, it got fixed, and I was out there recently, it's still there, it's not working. Now, we were told that these kids can go into the Chabola Center to get a drink of water, but there's no sign that says there's water someplace else. But what, the message that I got, and I'm afraid it's the message that some of our youth get, is that, you know, we're really not having the interest in the skate park that we should. Just for the examples that I gave, as far as I know, the city has not done much as far as any programs. Anything that's been done down there has been by outside clubs, and I only know of a couple of them, one was the youth commission several years ago. In addition to that, I think that the remarks by the inspector that came out there disclaiming is something to be concerned about. It's in our packet, but I want to read it a little bit. The inspector and Vic Moore have made a sincere effort to conduct a thorough inspection, but there is no guarantee that all existing or potential hazards have been identified and documented. It goes on, but the very fact, from what we've heard from the people that actually use the skate park, and this disclaimer, it gives me great concern. Another thing that bothered me, when we had the bad trouble, I guess you'd say, with some of the kids out there, instead of trying to address the issue, we moved the fence so that the area was smaller, and we could kind of get the bad people on the other side of the fence. So I'm saying, what kind of message are we giving to those people? I think that it's not the message that I expect our city to give. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Particularly impressed with the, is it the Wiggy Club? Wiggy Club, very impressive, good speakers, good thoughts. I did spend some time, I went out there to the park, and this has been a few weeks ago, and, you know, certainly, as it's noted in the report, it's been a, it's been used, and it's certainly in average condition. I think where council is put in a position is, we've looked at a report here on the inspection, at least for me, in trying to make a determination whether we make a significant investment, and I don't even know at this point where we would construct a new skate park, because if we, if we take this one out, obviously, there's going to be a period of time where there, there is no skate park in Galt. So, I think rather than trying to make a decision here tonight on whether we proceed with a new one or not, it's going to take a little bit of planning, because, one, we may want to look at a different location, and if you're going to look at improving the size of it, or the facilities available to it, I think that all takes time. I believe that in looking at the condition of it, a new park is going to be needed, there's no question about it. Tonight, I think you've heard that, through the city manager, that there, he's hopeful, at least, within the next year and a half, to undertake that project, assuming funds are available, and that is critical. There aren't funds available today. So, I think that as part of this process, that the Wiggy Club and other clubs that are interested, I think that there should be more of an integrated collaboration between the city and those groups in the design of a facility. If that's truly what we're going to do, I think it should be done correctly, and that, but that does take time. So I think that's more of a beginning start than tonight trying to make a decision whether we go yes or no. So, tonight, I couldn't vote in favor of funding the new facility, and those are some of the reasons.
Okay. So I want to tell you, I really don't have, I guess I'm a little disappointed that you, some of the speakers felt we have a preconceived idea regarding skateboards for kids who use the skate park. 12-years ago, when that skate park was built, when it was first proposed, I absolutely supported it, because my son was one of those kids that used it also, absolutely supported it. I absolutely support that we continue to have a skate park, but I agree with Councilman and Campion, that we need to look at where that skate park's located, I think, I went out and also looked at it, I actually think the footprint, the size that we have it, is not big enough. We bring a new budget to equipment in there, it's still probably not a big enough site. I'd really like to see our Parks and Rec Commission weigh in, our youth commission weigh in, and any of the other organizations that are involved. To come up with a design and maybe a location, we have areas that might be a better location for it than where it's currently located, in front of a busy street, in front of, with the flea market there, and all of the, with the pool, I mean, we've talked about it, it's just kind of putting a lot of recreational facilities in a very small space. I absolutely think that we need to look at planning, and we're bored of that, and we just don't have, I don't see that we have the funds now. Walker, the Walker Park expansion has been on the books for quite a while, Walker Park took a very long time to build. I've lived here almost 30 years, Walker Park was purchased, that property, a very long time ago.
12-years ago.
Because we needed a park on that side of town, because we didn't have it. We had all paid park fees, and we didn't have a park, and we had to wait a long time to have Walker Park built. So I'd like to see the Walker Park expansion completed, and then we can look at what funding we have for a skate park facility, and having it be a new and improved skate park facility and expansion, so that 12-years from now, you know, so we're not talking a long time, we're talking a couple of years from now, but a 12-year-old facility, it is in fairly good shape for a 12-year-old facility. If we could wait two more years and plan for a really amazing facility, that might last us longer than just 12-years or 14-years, I think is worth the wait. So I personally can't at this time support taking money away from one project that's been in the works for a very long time also, to move to another project that really hasn't had, in far as I'm concerned, adequate planning and thought put into what we want that new skate park to look like, and we can continue to use the existing skate park.
Okay.
I will make one more comment unless you want to.
I was going to jump in here, but go ahead.
You go first.
Okay. We're talking $3 million for the Walker Park project, correct? Okay. We're talking $300,000 tops for the skate park, correct? That's 10%. That's usually what we allow for oopses in a major project, correct? As for where the skate park's going to be, I spoke with Mr. Solis, and I've also spoken with Mr. Singleton, and the way I understand it, they're going to expand the existing site, and everybody seems to be happy with that, correct? I'm just, I'm trying to get the input here from the group, okay, because I'm seeing thumbs up from the crowd. As for the fence, I know I'm going to alien a lot of my council members up here, the fence that's up across the front, that was strictly designed as a safety feature, and I was all for it, because we had one young man who was skateboarding out there and got hit by a car. I never want to see that again, ever. I want you guys to go out there, be safe, have fun. So, in my opinion, if, it's only $300,000, and I'll tell you what, a lot of you young people are what swayed me on this, because I was leaning towards the revenue portion of this, but in retrospect, we're here for our community and for our citizens, and more importantly, for our youth. So, in my opinion, I think it's a wise idea for us to go ahead and to rebuild or put in the upgrades for the skate park. That's my two cents.
Well, finally, I just wanted to say, you know, to leave that park in the shape it's in for two more years, it makes me very uncomfortable. And I love the idea of sometime in the future, having a new skate park in a different location, but I just cannot see saying, okay, we're going to put it on hold, it's going to stay like it is, or we're going to continue to maintain it every week and go out and tighten some screws and everything, with the fact that at any- some screws and everything," with the fact that at any time someone could be injured. We've got a disclaimer that's saying we've been made aware of the situation and they're taking no responsibility if someone is injured from the equipment. But other than that, I just don't want to see these young people that aren't going to be young people in two years. They may be graduating and in college. I don't want to see them just hung out for the next two years with what we've got to I know it's going to be a tough decision and money is important. But the other thing, I just wanted to point out, I went and counted how many baseball fields we have. Because at our Youth Commission, someone asked that. They said, "Well, how many baseball fields do we have?" We have 12. Different, you know, some are Little League, some are hardball, some are softball, but we have 12. And part of the proposal for 1B is for two more, I think it's softball fields. I didn't see a thing about basketball. They are saying another restroom, and we do need another restroom out at Walker Park. But I think there'd be enough money to install the restroom. If not, you know, we have portables that we bring in for every event that we have in the city. So there are answers. And, you know, I just, I don't want to wait. I don't want to see these young people come out to that skate park for two more years the way it is. I love the dream that Councilman Campion has, and I hope it'll happen someday, but I don't want to see these young people put up with it for another two years.
I don't think that, you know, we sit on our hands for the next two years. What I'm suggesting is that, you know, that the groups engage now in this process. And, you know, who knows? In a year from now or less than a year from now, who knows when we're going to know where we are budget-wise or where Walker Park's going to come in? Maybe it's going to come in under budget. Who knows? But I hear, it's not, I think, as negative as being portrayed. I'd like to put it in more of a positive light that, you know, I support it, but I think we need to do it the right way. And I think rather than, you know, Mr. Staff and the mayor and Mr. Former Singleton, there should be more people involved in the design and input of this project. So I think that's really my only point, so. And I would, you know, I would actually, maybe this would be a good thing for the Youth Commission to kick off.
Well, and I think Parks and Rec.
And Parks and Rec, but I think it should start at the Youth Commission.
Yeah, I think the Youth Commission could go to Parks and Rec. I think that everyone needs to understand, we have a budget process. This money would come straight out of our general fund. We really cannot take $100,000 hit out of our general fund. That's not, in my opinion, it's not a good budget, right? We budget for a reason and we have a budget cycle. And one of the things is the skate park needs to fall within that budget cycle. It needs to be looked at as a capital improvement, as a budget item, not as something that we do kind of on spur of the moment and then take from our general fund. It's like, that's kind of, so I think that we need to follow the process. So I'm not saying to you, I'm absolutely agreeing with Councilman Campion. Let's work on it. If Walker comes in less, then the decision will be much easier. Otherwise, we need to look at putting that in our budget and budgeting for that and not doing something because we want to look at $100,000 being a small amount of money because it's not, not when you look at our operating budget at city. So that said and done, unless there's more comment.
I do have one more comment. Fortunately, I received an email today saying that our revenue is coming in higher than we had budgeted. I think, I think the economic situation is such that we're not afraid to spend $100,000 out of our general fund. I know we have whenever we felt the need was necessary, and I think the need is necessary. And I think something needs to be done now. Yes, in the future, design something. But this has already gone to the Parks and Recs Commission. And they say, "Spend it on 1B," which is their, what they have recommended. It was in our report. But I'm disagreeing with that.
No, that was in the CIP, which this is before the city council.
I don't know what you're saying.
Capital Improvement Plan is approved by the city council.
No, but the idea, this was presented to the Parks and Recs Commission, and they recommended that, you know, that we forego.
Oh, I see, I see what you're saying.
They recommend that Walker expansion continues.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
I see what you're saying.
So anyway, I strongly urge this council to think about the faces you're looking at now and not putting them back out there on the skate park as it is.
So, Mr. Mayor, I could maybe make an alternate suggestion for the council to consider. What staff initially recommended is to defer the skate park improvements until we complete Walker Park. An alternate approach would be to at least defer it until we get the bids back. Because the number in the Capital Improvement Plan is $3.6 million. It was put together two years ago. It's an estimate. We have not bid the project. So if we actually go out to bid and we get, we get the numbers back, and you'll know what the number is because the contract will come to the council, at that point in time, we'll know how much flexibility we have as far as funds available and what that project will cost. And maybe at that point in time, we'll have enough comfort to, you know, to move forward. So that's probably a, you know, a four- to six-month delay to get the bid on Walker Park, bring it before the council, and then, and then make a final decision on, on the skate park. The concern that I would have is, I mean, certainly, there's an issue with the general fund revenue, but if we moved ahead with the full project of $323,000, it takes $200,000 out of the park impact funds. And to the extent that the bids come back high on Walker Park, then it defers Walker Park. And it would be really nice to have that, that refined information, actually have the bids before we make that decision. So that's just an alternate, slightly alternate recommendation for your consideration.
Have we received our monetary amounts for our CBDDG funds yet? What we're going to be expected to receive?
I don't know that we have received that.
Average is about $100,000 to $150,000, correct?
Yeah, we're currently programmed for the current fiscal year and will be asked to submit our claims going forward for the next fiscal year. They ask for sort of a three-year plan, but we get to ask for it one year at a time. Now, there is a possibility, you heard former city manager, Mr. Bearman, recently indicate that there was at least a glimmer of optimism that we might be able to get above and beyond our normal $100,000, $120,000 allocation, get that reinstated to the extent that there were some extra CBDDG funds available countywide, so.
But the guarantee will be between $100 and $120?
That's been the current amount for the last several years, yes.
Okay. One of the things that I heard during this presentation that kind of concerned me is that those funds are going to be used towards the Fourth Street improvement. I thought those monies were already earmarked, not the CBGB funds, but the funds coming from Secod grants to do that upgrade. Am I incorrect in this?
I think that the Fourth Street improvements, what about the open space railroad, some of the quick project for some fence beautification as well as the parking lot.
So you're talking about the second phase.
The Fourth Street corridor is separately funded. But we were proposing to look at perhaps next year's funding to help accelerate the Fourth Street open space project, which again, would be in, you know, the Harvey Park corridor that was given a higher priority previously.
Thank you. All right, council, I think we've heard everyone. Do I have any motions?
I'd like to take the motion. I'd like to move that we've heard of the skate park improvements and expansion and that we direct staff to work with the Parks and Rec Commission to plan an expansion of the skate park and Parks and Rec Commission and community members to look at, to look at the renovations and expansion.
Do I have a second?
Question. Defer, is that defer until award of the bid on the Walker Park?
I was just going to defer it currently and I'd really like to see some planning process done for it.
Okay.
Do you have a motion by Councilmember Hewer? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Campion. Call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Payne? No. Councilmember Hewer?
Yes.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
No.
Fails for lack of vote. All right, let's continue this. Do you have any other ideas coming up?
Well, I'm going to move that we move forward with the proposal that has already been made by consultants or by contractors for the skate park, for the repairs and expansion of the skate park in its existing location.
Okay, we have a motion by Vice Mayor Payne. Do we have a second? I will second it. Call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
No.
Councilmember Campion?
No.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Where's Stalemate people?
So. So there are a couple of options. Council can either take no action on it, on this item, in which case, what staff will do is to defer the skate park improvements until we complete Walker Park per the adopted CIP. The other option is if a council member wanted to make a motion to continue it to a future motion, future meeting when you had all five members present. So those are the two options I could.
Well, actually, there's a third option. And it was one that you had mentioned. What was it that you had suggested?
My earlier suggestion was to defer the skate park improvements and expansion until the bids are received for Walker Park Phase 1B so that we know at that point exactly, minus contingency, we know pretty, pretty, pretty good certainty what it's going to cost to build it.
When is it going out to bid?
I think it's in the next four to six months.
We're finalizing the design plans and updating them. They were previously prepared and there wasn't funding to do the 1B. So we truncated the project to get the soccer fields and the artificial turf field done, is my understanding. I wasn't here at the time. So what we are hearing is a recommendation that we now have the funding available, that we proceed with that piece that we would have liked to have done previously. So we're dusting those plans off, updating them for codes, and we're probably going to ask them to quickly take a look at, you know, some drought-tolerant, water conservation-friendly things, including possibility of more artificial turf and less natural turf for just those reasons going forward. And then we would be putting our current schedule, if we can get those changes done over the next few months, would be to, for that to bid in the spring and we'll know as part of the budget cycle where we're at.
Let me ask you this. It was in our report, it said that, talking about funding, that for 1B, we had funding of $1,184,010 and a prediction or an estimate of $2,788,550. I hope I said that right. For a total of, if you add those two together, and I understand the second number was an estimate only, we would have $3,972,560 for 1B. Okay, if we looked at what we thought the cost was going to be, which was, and I hope I say it right, $3,635,500, that would still leave $337,060 with, that we could put towards the skate park.
Yes, that is correct. But of those numbers, the only number that is sure is the money we have in the bank now, and that's slightly over $1.1 million. What is not sure is how much this project is going to cost, which, and I mean Walker 1B. And we do not know how many, how much of that, those development impact fees are actually going to be received at this point in time. So when we get to the point of actually bidding the project and awarding it, first, we will not award the project unless we have money in the bank at that point in time. And so at that point, we will know how much money is in the bank, how many impact fees have been received, at least as of that date, and how much the project is going to cost. So we'll be dealing with a little bit more concrete information. There will still be a few variables, like contingency on the, on the project, but we'll have a little bit more certainty than we do today.
And when did you say you would have that?
Well, I guess we're hoping to bid in the springtime.
Bid in the spring, which would dovetail nicely with the budget process as far as updating our CIP.
So, six months.
I move that we continue this to a meeting where we have a full council.
Do I have a second? Is that a second? Kirk?
Oh, I thought you said second.
No, I was looking down.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay. Motion by Vice Mayor Payne, second by Councilmember Campion. Call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
No.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
All right, we'll be continuing to another meeting. We schedule for the next meeting, providing we have a full staff. Moving on to Public Works Department. Ordinance adding Chapter 8.49 to the Galt Municipal Code relating to home-generated Sharps Waste Management. Mr. Winkler?
Mayor and council members, this item is coming back to you. You've heard, had input on two prior occasions. And we are proposing tonight the introduction of a new ordinance for the City of Galt that would begin to address the concern with a lack of local take-back facilities for home-generated medical sharps. And the purpose of the ordinance would be to both ensure a safe and environmentally sound disposal options locally and to provide convenient local take-back options that could be used to make sure that we don't have to drive to South Sacramento area or Elk Grove under a household hazardous waste facility type option. So, by way of background, you heard about this as an original recommendation from the Youth Council on March 17th.
Youth Commission.
Okay, Youth Commission, I stand corrected. And I think they changed their name on me. And we subsequently brought back some recommendations as staff, I believe it was in June, and we were directed to proceed forward with a, with a formal development of an ordinance. And county council staff have drafted an ordinance that's before you tonight. And the ordinance proposes that retailers and providers of sharps within the city to establish a system, gives them some ability to dictate their, what that system would look like, but they must develop a system for collection and disposal of home-generated sharps. And that could include an option for a safe, approved container mail-back program. And it requires them to, whatever take-back program they do, at the time of the take-back or the mail-back, that there would be no extra charge involved in that. Now, they could surcharge when they sell the needles or collaboratively get together and come up with a funding stream to make that free at the time of disposal. And it could include surcharge when they dispense the needles or sell the needles. To implement the program further, if you concur with moving forward tonight, there would certainly need to be a public outreach process to make sure that once an ordinance is adopted, that people know about it. It doesn't do any good to have a secret program. And so we would propose that we would use press releases, city newsletters, website postings, and potential inserts in utility bills to, if an ordinance is adopted, to get the word out. We also have already made contact with the four known pharmacies and some other sharps dispensers in the area, and we'd count on the local press to help us get that word out as well. And so our recommendations are that you introduce and waive the reading of a sharps disposal ordinance tonight as a line in your packet and that if you concur, that we bring this back for final. this back for final approval and adoption at the October 20th council meeting.
Very good. Council?
I did want to just make one comment. I thought I read in the packet that you have sent letters to the local pharmacies and you got no response back. Is that correct?
As of this date, we have not had any formal response. We did send several faxes because we made several, found some edits and some recommended changes and worked with council on that. And each iteration was forwarded to them as they were developed. And to date, they have not spoken. I do not know if there are any pharmacy representatives here tonight.
All right, I do have two public comments here. John Gordon?
I do want to applaud, you know, the efforts that are, move forward with this project on behalf of the Youth. As an individual, you know, I just wanted to note this slight difference between what the Youth Commission proposed and what, and what I'm reading, the draft that's under review. One of the provisions in the draft that, that we proposed, which was taken from Tullary, would allow retailers to accept up to two quarts of needles not sold by the retailer. From what I understand, hearing your clarification, this ordinance, the draft does not allow the take-back. If I, for instance, bought needles in Lodi or my pharmacy in Lodi or my pharmacy in Elk Grove, I wouldn't be able to dispose of them in Galt. This ordinance doesn't address situations like one of our restaurants was emptying the garbage and they came across needles, that they're not able to dispose needles here in Galt. If the community cleans up the creeks, as, as we have community groups do annually, this ordinance doesn't necessarily address the safe and convenient local disposal of needles. So, I remain a little concerned, as it's currently written, that it really doesn't address community safety, as, which was one of our, which was one of the intents of the call.
That was the same question I was going to have, is it, is it not possible under the statute to, 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 to require that? That have, to have pharmacies accept needles not sold by them?
It, it allows for the option. It says that a retailer shall at a minimum provide the following, and they can, they, it does provide that the retailer may require proof of purchase, but doesn't have to.
So, they may require, and they require it, they don't necessarily have to accept it if, if you have proof. Is that, I guess, maybe that's a clarification. If retailer says, "Show me proof that you bought 10 needles here," and I can't show you proof, the retailer can say, "I don't necessarily have to accept your needles." That's how I read the ordinance.
I think the, you know, Mr. Gordon, I thought the comment was that you thought the ordinance prohibited retailers from voluntarily accepting needles beyond what they had sold. And this ordinance sets a minimum. It does not prevent the retailers from voluntarily accepting needles that they did not sell. So, if we have a creek, we clean up and needles are collected, and they want to accept those needles, they certainly have the option to do that, but they are not compelled by this ordinance to accept beyond what they have sold. So, is that, does that address your question?
Yes, this is my question. I don't know if it addresses my concern, because if it shall not be required to accept sharps in the amounting seating, the sharps previously sold to the consumer. Again, if I bought my needles, say, my doctor's in Lodi, and I went to the Rite Aid in Lodi, I can't go to the Rite Aid in Galt to dispose of them. I would have to, have to figure something else out.
I think, I think what you're getting is, can, can the ordinance mandate pharmacies in Galt to accept needles not sold by them?
Which was done in Madera. In, in the version that we, that the Youth Commission provided, that, there was one element of that that...
I mean, I think they would have to assume a reasonable standard, but I guess that's the real question is, because to me, that, that kind of stuck out to me. Well, yeah, I don't know that that goes to what the real issue was because of people are, like the examples you brought up. I think that's a good example of why we would need to do that. I would be in favor of it if it's possible. Do we need more time?
Yeah, we can take a look at that ordinance. This was modeled on the ordinance that has been in effect in Sacramento for some time. There, I don't know if there are local pharmacies that would have some reservation about doing that, so we would probably want that input as well.
I think as a policy matter, the reason that we prepared it this way, in addition to the fact that this is Sac City's ordinance, is to balance the economic burden with the economic benefits, so that if the retailer is selling needles and they're gaining, making a profit off that sale, then they ought to be responsible for the burden that it creates. And so, that's why we drafted it the way we did.
To that extent, then, well, you're not, unless, John, are you done?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Do we have another speaker?
I have one more.
Okay. I'll wait.
Okay. Al Baldwin?
Al Baldwin, a concerned citizen, now on needles. The ordinance would be, you sell them, you take them back in Galt. Is that correct? Making it very simple.
Yes.
If I buy vaporizer from Rite Aid or CVS, and it didn't work right, I could probably take it back to Lodi and get my refund. Is that correct?
I believe that's probably the policy of the...
Well, that's, that's the policy, right? So, if I buy something in Galt, can I return the needle to Lodi? That would be another question you might want to look at.
Because Lodi doesn't get needles, right?
Not, no, but Galt does. So, we, we got a little quanta here going back and forth, what's the legality of it? The only thing I can say tonight that would maybe make it a little bit more feasible in this case, is if you live in Galt, you can return it to Galt. If you bought it in Galt, you can return it. If you live in Galt, you can do it. We could even throw in, if you bought needles from Rite Aid in Lodi, but you live in Galt, could that work? But you have to live in Galt, you see? That's the, the crux of this thing. It's another one, another question that you, you could use to at least get something going here.
Yeah.
I don't know what the legality is of this. That's why you guys get the big bucks. So, I'm just trying to make this thing work some way. And I'd like you to get to it and see, because the group did a lot of work on this, I commend them for it, and they're taking so much pride in their community to do something like this. This is major. And it's, it's not a, and I'm surprised that pharmacies haven't responded to any of this. It shows lack of concern, yet we're keeping them in business. You know, it just seems like they want our business, but then they don't want to respond to it. What's so hard about responding to it? So, you know, and we're getting more retailing in Galt, which means you're going to have more revenues in Galt, which means you're going to have more taxes in Galt, which means you're going to have a lot more money in Galt in the next year. Gee whiz, I don't even want to go back to skate park. But you're going to have a lot of money coming into Galt in the next year. So, this here, something to think about. So, if you could come up with an answer, I'm sure it would help the Youth Committee and would help the citizens of Galt, especially the elderly. I think we have 15% or 20% elderly in Galt that's going to probably need more needles all the time. And I hate to say this, but our garbage is going to get, start getting filled with needles again, and I, I'll tell you, they, it's awful for, for something like that to look forward to. One needle would pay for everything if you got pricked by it. So, the things you got to go through is major. So, please try and come up with the, an answer. I've given you a few scenarios and a few things to challenge yourself with, and we have an expert lawyer, attorney here tonight, and it looks like she lives with it.
It's not my name.
And we want her to work for it, for this and do her best and bring this to a good end. It is definitely needed in this small town of Galt. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Al.
I guess to respond, I don't think, I think it would be difficult to impose a requirement that somebody have to live in Galt to be able to return something in Galt. I think you do want to encourage people who may not live in Galt to patronize the businesses in Galt. And so, I think that's one of the reasons why having some, if, if the pharmacist wanted to see that, that an item had been purchased at that store, that's really all they care about. It's not so much whether or not the person lives in Galt, if it was purchased in Galt. So, yeah, that, I just wanted to respond to that one item that you raised.
And I would just want to add that I was actually encouraged by the fact that we did not hear from the drugstores, the pharmacies. You know, the message that I received from their lack of comment was that they were willing to take on this particular responsibility as set forth in this ordinance. So, I did, I was encouraged by that.
And I will say that these types of ordinances are being adopted more and more by different communities because it's seen as really a way to protect public safety and health.
Councilmember Campion, did you want to complete what you had?
Yeah, I, I, you know, I think it's important to at least get this ordinance on the books, but at the same time, I'd like to have the attorney's office look into the possibility of requiring up to some reasonable maximum of, of sharps which are not purchased at that retailer to be incorporated into this ordinance, if that's a possibility. And then we can, we can amend the, the ordinance, but I think it's important to at least get this portion going as soon as we can. So, I would recommend that we approve, introduce this ordinance tonight and instruct staff to look into the possibility of, of that, of requiring, you know, and I don't, I don't even know what an appropriate number is. Maybe through your research, you can find out. So, that would be my motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Campion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Vice Mayor Payne. Any further discussion?
Yes. Okay, so, you know, state law currently prohibits disposal of ungenerated waste into, into the trash, the recycling containers, and we have citizens of the community that don't adhere to the state law. Not fast to state law. My concern about the ordinance is there is no regulation piece, as there is no regulation piece in the state law either. So, it's still going to be up to the citizens to be responsible about this. And as concerned as I am about, I face that threat every day myself regarding sharps and getting needles stiff. I support the ordinance, but I would really like to see us move in the direction of, as you said, other needles are here in town. I went and visited the facility in Elk Grove where citizens can take their sharps containers and dispose of their sharps, and we're paying for that as a community. We have a contract and we're paying for that. There's part of me that would propose that as a community, working with Cal Waste and possibly looking at having some sort of a disposal system. At the last meeting, Mr. Baldwin talked about what Kaiser has. So, I went and looked at what Kaiser has. And I went and looked at the Elk Grove Police Department where you can dispose of unused medications, because it was something very similar. These big kiosks where you just drop it in and you dispose it, right? And then it's disposed of properly by, disposed of properly by the authorities or... As much as I support the ordinance, I don't think without a regulation piece, it's going to make much of a difference. I think we're going to put an ordinance on the books that law-abiding citizens, and if the drugstore pharmacies are cooperative, probably will take some sharps out of the system, but I don't think it'll take all sharps out of the system. I don't even know if it'll take more sharps than are in the system right now, because we all agree, if you're a law-abiding conscientious citizen, you wouldn't be throwing your sharps into garbage. So, I still think that we need to work with Cal Waste, we need to work with whether, and figure out a system that would be a very accessible system to the citizens, whether we put a kiosk at the police department that people can throw their sharps into, like they do in Elk Grove for their drugs. It would go into a safe place, it wouldn't, the sharps wouldn't end up back out on the street being used illegally. And at the same time, then, we can dispose of them properly. We have the contract with Elk Grove, we have, you know, Cal Waste. I'm sure what one workman's top case costs you would pay for a large amount of disposal and a lot of peace of mind. And I think as a city, we need to work in that direction and look at some sort of, you know, when this came before us last time, I was kind of thrown off guard, even though in my career, it's something I face every day. So, I went in and researched it and looked at some of the issues, and I think there's another way we can do this, because I'm not sure ordinances without regulation and without a way of enforcing them are going to make a big difference in the long run. And as much as I want to keep the workers of Cal Waste safe also. So, I'll support the ordinance, but I really think that it doesn't go far enough because it doesn't have a, it does not have an enforcement. And I'm not sure how we would enforce this ordinance anyway.
Well, it would be difficult. But I think it's a, it's a start. And I think that's, that's the only thing we can say tonight. It's better than what we have now.
It's a start. And I absolutely agree with you, Kirk, that it's a start. But it doesn't go far enough if we're really talking about public safety and we're really trying to make those, the workers safe.
I think that's something to work on. I, I agree with everything you said, though. I, you know, but again, it takes a cooperative public, a responsible public, whether they take it back to Rite Aid or they take it to the police department, they have to physically do something with it. So, that's, that's really where it starts, and maybe it's an education piece. I don't know.
Well, I agree with both of you that it is a start. I mean, bottom line is, if you're going to do something legally, you're going to do it. I mean, just recently, we had an event at your facility that cleared the facility out because of somebody improperly disposing of CS gas. First thing is, I don't know where they got it, because I thought it was to, only used by law enforcement and the military. And the second one is, who in their right mind would dispose of something in that manner? So, again, it goes back to doing something in a legal manner and being able to enforce it, as you said. But this is a start. So, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne? Aye. Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye. We're all unanimous. All right. Moving on to communications. Anything? City clerk's report?
No, I have nothing.
Staff? Tony, you've been quiet over there.
Good thing. Just real quickly, the, I'll be bringing to you in the next meeting, an update and a recommendation for our sleek, annexation. We've met with the community, we met with the LAFCO again today, and looking pretty positive, so a little bit more research will, that brought to you in the next meeting.
Very good. Chief?
Yeah, we'll update you on a couple of personnel issues. Lieutenant Brian Vazuzi has officially retired, started his duties with the County of Sacramento today. And today, I received official notice from our record supervisor, Jennifer Gross, that she is retiring on November 30th. We began discussions with Paula and Human Resources on both those processes, and we'll keep you informed of how they proceed.
Very good. Just because you have a nameplate doesn't mean you're getting out front of it, Greg. Anything? Paula? Mr. Winkler?
Two quick items. As some of you are aware, because we got calls over the weekend and on our Black Friday, we've broken a few eggs to start the omelet on the Quiet Zone median project. So, steps forward and steps back, we have identified a need to make sure that we have plenty of delineation and extra striping, and we've noticed that the plans aren't as complete as they could be. We're working with a contractor... We're working with the contractor to do temporary delineations for people that have found those curves to be unappealing if you don't see them at night, and so we're doing some temporary delineation as we open those up, but we will be coming back prior to completing the work with some permanent delineations, including taking a fresh look at how trucks are going to circulate, particularly on Elm at McFarland, where due to the close proximity of the intersection to the railroad, and the required length of that median, that we're probably going to have to reroute trucks over to A Street, which is an approved truck route. So we're looking at those concerns that are coming in from the public, and we're going to do our best to make them go the way of the roundabouts, where there was a lot of pessimism, and I think, at the end of the day, it turned out to be a good product. And I think we'll enjoy the Quiet Zones, and we'll get through these bumps in the road, and make sure it's safe and passable for our public, and we're still working through those wrinkles. Second item is, we do have your September water conservation numbers, and for the first time since June, I must report that we are falling just short of our mandated 32 percent. We did hit 30 percent for the month of September, which is a 15-year low for the month of September, but it's not quite as low as the state has mandated. That's the bad news. The good news is that we have banked some credits from June, July, August, so we're not in any imminent danger of penal, penalties from the state, but we do want to encourage our continued conviction on the part of our residents to continue to conserve water. As we move into the fall and winter, it'll be harder to hit those targets, because instead of just cutting back on watering, now we've got to cut back on indoor usage to hit those lower month targets. So we're going to have to keep working the, the problem, but I'm confident that we can do it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Rudolph?
Nobody is allowed to leave or retire until we get some of these positions. I have nothing.
Iris?
I just have my homework assignments, and I will be reporting back.
Okay. In contrary to popular opinion, you're not Kimberly, you're Iris.
That's right.
Councilmember Campion?
Nothing.
Nothing. Councilmember Hewer? Vice Mayor Payne?
Yes, we had a workday out at the garden on Saturday, and I want to say thank you to the Herald 4H. They came out and pulled up our summer garden and planted our winter garden, and appreciated all of their help.
All right. I have nothing with that. This meeting is adjourned.